Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Definitely. That's just amazing. All right, now that's six o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll go ahead and proceed with roll call.
Brooks.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Hausman.
Here.
Jo- Jones.
Here.
McInerney.
Here.
Wells. Mayor Beasley.
Here. All right, we have a quorum, so I will entertain a motion and a second for the agenda as it appears before us.
Second.
A motion and a second for the agenda, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I know we should have done that before, but we'll just continue on. Approval of the minutes, please. Motion from Jones, second from McInerney to approve the minutes of the September fourteenth briefing and the September eighteenth meeting. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that being said, we'll go to the approval of the claims. Which I will entertain that. I'm a motion from Hausman, second by Brooks to approve the claims for October second. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Visitors and timed items, anybody? We have nothing on our agenda, but you are allowed five minutes if you so desire. All right. Going once, twice? All right. Old Business is the second reading award in its 554 rezoned property described as tract two, false addition, which will now become 1,000 South Sioux Boulevard, false land. And Justin is here to answer any of our questions.
Hi, guys. Justin Oakland. I'm with Oakland Homes, 312 East Holly Boulevard here in Brandon. I guess there was really no concerns that I sensed at the first reading. It seemed like everybody was good with it. Blaine, I know you weren't present. So I guess we'd just be asking for approval to begin working on engineer design plans and such.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any in the crowd that wishes to address us? Questions or anything? If not, I have a motion from, it's escaped me for just a second, John McInerney, second by Jones. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Justin.
You guys are making some nice progress on the, on Aspen, too. Yep, I see all, it's all blacktopped. Keep going, man. Yeah, yeah. Good luck with that. All right, you bet. Item eight, golf course. They're playing. Yep, fall rates are on there. It's advertised in the paper.
Yeah, fall rates went in last week, I think.
Yep, it's been in the paper. People are playing, still.
Today?
Nah, I didn't see anybody today. Yeah, today, earlier. Police. I see the chief back there.
Moving forward with the interviews, but nothing further.
Okay, very good. Item ten. We have the maintenance report from the park. I see Devon's back there also. Item ten B, we have some proposed financing for Aspen Park concession and restroom building.
Uh, so if I could go ahead and make my committee report, is that okay?
Certainly.
Okay. So this Stone Ridge playground equipment has been ordered, so we'll be coming in shortly, and we think that we'll be able to install it ourselves, so save us a little bit of money. We are working on a public discussion survey. So we'd like to put a survey out, I don't know, on the website, in the newspaper, probably in the utility billing, various ways, and see what priorities our residents think we should be focusing on from a park standpoint. I think that'll just give us some good input to make sure we're going down the right path. We are evaluating vending machines that we use at the pool this year rather than having staff in the, in the facility with the food. And we're also looking at the cost of passes and lessons. They haven't been updated since 2012. Not saying that we're going to increase them, but we're just evaluating them. We would like to get approval to buy some software for the swimming pool registration, and that would handle the, the families and kids coming in to swim, and it would also handle the swimming lessons. And Christina's done a bunch of research on it. We can sign up online. First year be a little bit of work, right, Christina? To get everything input, but then once that happens, it'll be a lot easier rather than having the, what did we used to have on the towels, the little patches?
Yeah, the little patches.
Those little patches. So I'll circle back around for that in a minute. We have applied for a community foundation grant for Stone Ridge Park. And that was supposed to be in at the end of September, so we'll see if we're awarded anything for that. The Aspen Park groundbreaking was really well attended. That was for the, for Field A. So that was exciting to see that happening. The funding for the concession stand, we were about $100,000 short. We had seven bids that came in, all very comparative, so we're confident that the bids are where they should be. We just, they're just higher than we had hoped. And so we went in, the park board went in and looked at our budget for next year. And we're going to, if, with your approval, we'd like to defer the bathroom and the shelter at Stone Ridge to the following year. And then poor Devon is going to lose his skid loader for, for next year. And then that affects the golf course because they're going to take Devon's old golf course. So we're trying to stay within our budget, but still get that concession stand done. So if that's agreeable to the council, we would appreciate your support on that. I do have Chris Brown here from the Baseball Association, and he just wanted to share a few comments about the Field A renovation. So come on up, Chris.
He pressed a purple button, Chris. Thank you.
Good? All right. As Barb said, my name is Chris Brown. I'm her sponsorship rep for the Brandon Valley Baseball Association, so Barb just invited me in tonight to give you guys a little bit of an update on where the project is at as of today, and then some of the things that are already happening due to the project going ahead down at Aspen Park, so. With that being said, the work is on schedule. I think if you've been down there, you've seen there's quite a bit of work that's been done already. The infield is already graded. They're starting to put the curb in for the turfing system. The weather's not cooperating as of today, obviously, but they're moving ahead with that. The outfield has been tilled up. There was one change order that we're going to have to incur on that as an association. We came down and talked to Brian and Paul about what was going to happen in right field to help drain the field essentially. And we're going to actually level that area out, so the field will actually drain out into the parking lot and then down into that lower area. So that'll be a change order that we'll incur through, First Rate is who we use to do the excavating on that, so that's just something we'll deal with on the financial side on our side, but all parties agreed that that was the best route to do out in right field, because we actually had about a three-foot drop from right field to left field. And they just couldn't figure out a way to grade it, so it would actually leave the facility. So those changes are being made. Those dollars will all be handled by us as an association. As of today, just some of the things that are happening that we've done, we're in talks right now with the University of Sioux Falls and South Dakota State to use the facility next year if their fields aren't ready. Generally in the spring here with college baseball, infield's that are of natural surface aren't ready to go in the spring. So the head baseball coach at USF is actually a director for our association, so obviously we have a close relationship with him. And then through my contacts with South Dakota State, I had a chance to sit down with Rob Bishop, the head coach, and talk to him about the potential of bringing SDSU games here. Nothing guaranteed, but like I said, we're in talks with them to potentially have those events come to town. We're partnering with Renner to host a Legion tournament. Invitations have been sent out to North Dakota, South Dakota, Nebraska, Iowa, and Minnesota to attract teams to that tournament. We're super excited about that. That'll be Father's Day weekend, and that will take place here. We're going to move our 14U tournament out to Valley Springs that weekend, but we're going to have the Legion tournament here in town, so that'll coincide with our Sunshine Foods tournament. But like I said, we're really excited for that opportunity for our kids to play good competition and not have to travel to Fargo or Des Moines or Omaha to do it. They'll come to us. So as of right now, we have 11 teams that have said yes. We're looking for five more for a 16-team tournament at, at Renner's facility than our facility here in Brandon. As an association, we've already started to receive registrations for our tournaments next year, which is really exciting. We host four tournaments every year. May, June, or April, May, June, July is our three, is our four tournaments, and we've already seen registrations coming in for those. So we haven't even approached those people though as of yet with our new facility, so we're hoping that those will bump up. And then with the Legion tournament coming to town, we're hoping it brings some out-of-town teams, like I said, that have younger kids also, who in turn then will bring those, those teams along to our facility to, to play here in Brandon. We're scheduling rookies, machine pitch, minors, and majors days at the park, so all teams will get to play at the facility. So those will be on Saturdays and Sundays. We'll have one day that's a rookies' day, one day is a machine pitch day, one day minors, one day majors. So those are our local kids, but they'll all have an opportunity to play at that field, because we're actually building it that we'll, we'll be able to put in bases at 60 feet, 70 feet, 80 feet, and 90 feet. So the field will suit all kids in our association, so we're excited about that. 80% of our Legion teams' games and our 13 and 14-year-old games will be at that facility. So 13s, 14s, obviously because they can't drive, so they have to stay here in town. And generally in our association, about nine out of 10 kids are from Brandon. Usually about one per team is from Valley Springs. So that's why we made that decision, and then obviously part of the approach to this whole thing was to bring our high school and Legion teams back here to Brandon to play. So, but we're also not going to abandon Valley Springs. They've been wonderful to us. They've been a great facility, and they still want to see varsity games out there, so we will still play some varsity double headers in Valley, which then in turn will allow us to bring our junior Legion and our 16 new teams and let them play in our new facility here in Brandon. So roughly about 20% of their games will be here in town at the 16U and junior Legion level, because those kids can drive. So they can utilize that facility out in Valley Springs for practice and for games. So, you know, as an association, we're just, we're grateful for this public-private partnership. I think it's gone wonderfully so far. You know, we appreciate all the support we've received from the city. Obviously, all the support we received from you guys as a council, so we're, we're excited to push ahead. You know, there's work to be done. We hope the snow doesn't fly till about December. If we could predict it, then that would be best-case scenario for all of us. But we do, you know, as, as a whole, we do believe that this project is doing, you know, what the sign says. It's building a better life here in Brandon. So we're excited for the things that are ahead, and if you ever want us to come in and give you an update where we're at or what we're doing, please give us a call.
Good. Thank you very much. Thanks for the update.
Yep.
And good luck on your building season.
So if we, if we could circle back, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of that software for the pool. I believe we have $7,000 in the budget for it, and that would be in this year's budget.
And that covers expenses?
Yes.
Okay, that was item D. On our agenda.
Item D?
Yeah, where we haven't got B yet, C yet, or D yet.
Oh, I almost have an old agenda. Oh, okay. Okay, sorry. Okay, never mind. Okay, never mind. Table that motion.
All right. Thank you for your update, though, on, on the park. Item B is the proposed financing for the Aspen Park concession and restroom, and I think that's the sheet that we have right here. Correct?
So I would make a motion that we, do we have to make a motion? It's in the budget.
It's, it's in the budget, just reallocation from different projects. So if you want to, you can certainly authorize the, the change in expenditures.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we defer the, the restroom shelter at Stone Ridge and the skid loader until a future date and use that money to finish up the concession stand at Aspen Park.
A motion from Fish, second by Jones, to defer some payments and reallocate some money to continue to finish a project, a building project at Aspen Park. Any questions or discussion? Devon's back there with tears in his eyes losing his skids to air, but if not, any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10C, we have pay app number one for Aspen Park concession and restroom.
Pay app in the amount of $14,274, basically a MOP charge or percentage of MOP charge.
Motion from Fish, second by McInerney to approve pay app number one to RCM Services to get started on the Aspen Park concession and restroom building. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have item 10D, pool software program proposal.
I'll make a motion to approve. The pool software program.
I'm a motion from Hausman, second by Brooks, to approve the pool software program that will help us with registration of all things with the pool. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Parks? All right, moving on to administration. P and Z Thursday. All right. Item 12, we have our maintenance work report there. I know, I'll take a quick look, but I'm assuming we're probably waiting for a few more leaves to come down before we fire up the old street sweeper and head it down the, the streets of Brandon. Sure. All right. Yes, they will. Item 12B, we have Road Guide Construction Pay App One and final for the Seal Coat project.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
A motion from Hausman, second. Jones to approve pay app number one for Road Guide Construction for Seal Coat. Questions or discussion? Yes, he did. If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then, we have change order number one, Brandon Park Edition. Mr. Brown.
Uh, this change order is for Brandon Park Edition. This is for what we ended up with is some unstable subgrade out on Sylvan Circle Project Phase Two, basically, and what this was, was we ended up swapping out our gravel for crushed concrete. And so that difference in cost is what you see there of about $5,700, and that was something that administratively, Paul and Brian had approved that, but this is going through the formal process of getting that approved. And then also, there will be, you know, there's only a couple of items left on our punch list, so that project will be closed out very soon. And so there should be some credits coming anyway on that project, so there's going to be some credits coming as well when we zero out the project, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion from Hausman, second by Brooks, to, for change order number one, Brandon Park Edition. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have item 12D, Sukup Construction Pay App Number Four for Brandon Park Edition.
This is a progress payment for work completed on the project. We'd recommend approval and authorization for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Um, I have a motion from Hausman, second by Jones, to approve pay app number four to Sukup Construction. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then, item E. We have a proposal for improvements in the alley behind Pizza Ranch.
If you look on page 31 of your packet, it shows we will be installing curb and gutter along the east side of the asphalt parking lot behind Family Furniture and Pizza Ranch. This is part of an agreement that we had when we purchased. If you look at Lot 1B, it's a little triangular piece shape. Uh, that was part of the purchase agreement that we would install curb and gutter to control runoff off of that parcel across those properties. Uh, we'll install curb and gutter. We'll remove some old concrete that's in there. I believe there's an old car wash there at one point in time.
Yes, there was.
And then we will backfill with black dirt and seed. The low bid was submitted by D and K Construction for $15,250.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion from Hausman, second Jones, to approve the improvements behind the Pizza Ranch and Family Floors, the alleyway. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item F, extension of Meadow Brook Trail.
Council had asked staff to talk to, meet with the property owner and the developer of the bluffs in Eagle Creek about the extension of Meadow Brook Trail. We sat down and spoke with them. Neither one of those have current plans to extend and connect up Meadow Brook Trail to Heritage. It's about 1,000 linear feet. Cost estimate, at least what we normally use is about $450 a foot, so somewhere around $450,000 for construction of the improvements. So. Well, and, and they are not willing to sell it at this point in time, so if they are unwilling to sell it, unwilling to develop, the only avenue that the city really has is to condemn the property and move forward. That would increase the cost. I, we haven't looked at that price.
I know there's people in the audience here that probably are, are concerned about that, because that would alleviate some of the congestion on Holly and Sandstone intersection and whatnot. So what are our options other than a, just a forcible condemnation? Yes.
Well, you know, there is an alternative to that, putting that street in, and that would be to, to improve the intersection of Sandstone and urbanize that and put the, the traffic signal in there. Or the other alternative would be to, because that was planned to have a signal at that intersection as well. Or the other alternative would be to install maybe a temporary signal at that intersection, rather than going through the condemnation process.
I thought it was too close to the other.
Yeah, I thought it was too close to the other one.
I think they had planned to have one there, too.
So that's
You don't remember it that way, Brian?
I don't think so.
No, I don't, I don't either. I don't remember it that way.
But I don't think Sandstone was supposed to be signaling.
Yeah, I don't think so either, but what about
Turn lanes.
Turn lane.
Constructed.
Oh, maybe I misunderstood.
But I'd, I'd have to look.
I'll look back.
Yeah, because I don't remember that being a stoplight.
I know we've discussed in the past about a signal there, but we always thought that we got the, from the people that know about roads, that it's too close to the one on Yeah, so there.
What about, what about a turn lane there, Brian? What about a turn lane there?
A turn lane was, in the traffic study that was done 10 years ago, roughly, 2010-ish. There were traffic, or turn lanes that were included in that Stan- Sandstone intersection at some point in time. I think Paul's, Paul's threw some numbers out, but I cannot remember what it was. We'll have to work with the county.
It's their road.
Half of their, half is, half is theirs.
Yes.
I'd like to hear from, from the folks in the audience before I put my two cents worth in.
My name is Matt Henning. I live at 1416 Creekside Circle in Eagle Creek. You know, this is the second time I've come to the council about this road. I was here back in June. I like the idea of a signal. It at least gives us a chance to get out, because it, it's not about time sitting there. I, I'll sit there as long as I have to. It's about safety. We have to mash on this, on this, on the accelerator and jump out in front of 45 mile an hour traffic. Now, when the council talked about this, I believe it was late July, or sometime in June, I just can't remember when it was. We asked the police chief to increase police presence on that road. That was done, but now I feel like that has fallen off and we've lost that. So I'd asked the council to recommend to the police chief that there be more presence out there. I know the police are busy, but it is still a city road, in the city limits. I, I do not agree with the turn signal, or with the turning lane, excuse me, because I feel that that does not slow the flow of traffic down. They're just keeping some zingin' by us all the time while we're sitting there. So that is my opinion. I'm not speaking for anybody else in the development. I'm speaking for myself. I would love to see the turning, turn signal put in, not the turning lane. Thank you. Yep.
So it's more a problem of trying to get out rather than turning in?
No. In the morning, if you want to go to Sioux Falls, it's getting out.
Right.
It's getting out.
And if you, in the evening, if you are coming from Brandon and trying to get in, that's when that's a problem.
So would that turn lane help in that respect?
No, because, because the traffic's just going to keep flowing.
Yeah.
And that, and, and we have a sign that says, "Do not pass on the right." You guys put in the flashing one, it still doesn't matter. We still see people passing on the right. I seen two of them here last week do it. Nobody has respect for anybody sitting there. And I mean, it's it, it's, I mean, it's time to do something. I've lived in that development for seven years and nothing has been done. You know, we, we need some improvement to that intersection, and like I said, I like the street light idea, so.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Mark Rechtinbaugh, 1505 Creekside Circle. I've been there 11-plus years now. Respectfully, I kind of disagree with what the last gentleman said. I think if we just had the cheapest alternative economically for the city, a turn lane heading west, so we don't get rear-ended. We all bought that property knowing that that street should be put in, and if our developer doesn't want to, I guess as a city council, I'd come back to him. developer doesn't want to, I guess as a city council, I'd come back to them and say, "Well, we just won't approve any more of your developments." You had it on your plan, you don't want to do it, you don't want to pay for it, then we just will hold all your developments until you do. That's how I solve that, I guess. Getting out, I'm not concerned with it. I bought the place knowing that it'd take me time to get out of there, that's fine. But when my kid comes home from school and that traffic is coming and he gets rear-ended, then I'll be upset. And I think there's enough road width now, if we just paint the lines, widen the white lines out, you put one turn lane to get into our development from the east, it'll alleviate the accidents. I understand time getting out is an issue also, but I think that's the cheapest alternative if we can get Meadowbrook put in. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comment.
And I did distribute a email that I had received from a resident out there, too, so. I thought that was you out there, but I wasn't sure.
Kami Gladys, 1320 Meadowbrook Trail. I've been here before, too, in regards to this issue. I'm the one, I'm concerned more about getting out. I have two little kids in the back of the car. I have to slam on my accelerator to get out, and people do not slow down when they see me coming in. I mean, both, both directions are an issue, and I just feel like we need to come up with something to help. I don't know if there's been research done on reducing speed limits. I know in the past you said you kind of, John, have mentioned that, you know, maybe that would be something to look into. It's just, there's only gonna be more traffic. So I feel like now is the time to try to figure out something to fix it, so.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Look back at that, about the street light, or look at the turn lane. I know coming this way, the turn lane would help, but it's the 7 o'clock, 6:30 to 7:45 time to get out and left is, and then with all the construction on Rice Street also, it's bottlenecking things up, too. So hopefully, we can, we can figure out a way to solve this.
If I may, Mayor.
Yes, you may.
You know, my background is law enforcement, safety and security, and, you know, there are a lot of safety issues that we're dealing with out there, certainly with the traffic. But I think the biggest thing that we're overlooking is the one entry and exit out of that development. If something happens to that interior exit and it gets jammed up and we have an emergency within that development, we've got no alternate route. I think that's certainly something worthy to think of. Do I like condemning land? Do I like moving forward with condemnation? No, I don't. I absolutely don't. I think that's absolutely worst-case scenario. But we've been dealing with this conversation for an awful long time. And we have to get this fixed for these folks. I mean, it's just, it's that simple. We have to get this fixed. So we gotta move forward.
Oops. Yes, Matt.
I just have one question. What is the council in the city doing for future developments to make sure that this doesn't happen again? That's my biggest question. I know Creekside was supposed to go through, and then a cul-de-sac got put in, and this gentleman here had copies of Meadowbrook Trail going through. What is the council doing to make sure that this doesn't happen again?
Well, in planning and zoning, they have to provide a preliminary plan that has to be approved, showing their, all their roads.
And I think I can answer that question because I brought that question forward to our engineer and to our planning and zoning people. And the question is, how did this happen and what did we miss? Well, how it happened was, there's been a lot of changes to planning and zoning as far as our regulations go, and then putting the new city engineer on as far as the checks and balances system. That checks and balance system wasn't there before. You know, and I'm not, I'm not gonna say who made the mistake or what happened, but I have been promised that that cannot occur again. That they can't come in after they've got those plans okayed and just change them. So am I correct, Brian? And that came from Paul himself. I spent an hour in Paul Sando's office, you know, pounding my fist on the desk saying, "What happened here? How did this happen?" And it was before Paul's time, so, I mean, it's, granted, you've got to go back and do some history because I certainly am not a fan of that either, and you've heard me say that here. But again, I'm not a fan of condemnation, but I'm not telling you that's not something that I certainly won't pursue. So nobody likes to spend $500,000, but, you know, money is secondary, in my opinion, with this, and there's, there's money out there, and I think people need to come forward that had made the original change.
Well, I mean, if we would go down that route, not saying we will, but I mean, in the meantime, these things always take forever. What could we do in the meantime to alleviate some of the concern?
Well, I think that's where we fall back to Brian, or to Brian to do that research to see, go back and look at that traffic study, Mayor, as you had moved forward, and certainly look at alternatives. I mean, I would like to think that they're temporary alternatives because I'm gonna continue to push forward for the extension of Meadowbrook Trail. I just, I am. I've been squashed before, but here I am again. I'm back. So, you know, we'll move forward and see what happens.
Yes.
Can we put on the agenda for next meeting, then?
Yes. Yes. And we will. We will do our best.
Is it possible to hold up some developments of his, maybe put a little pressure on him, or is that something we can't do?
That's not a question that I can answer. I don't know.
Yeah.
It's difficult. I, you know, I guess I'm not... My personal opinion is, this is an ethical question, and, you know, the one thing the good Lord gives us is our integrity, which we like to keep intact. Some of us like to keep intact. I'll put it that way. Some of us like to keep intact. I am, I'm a proponent for transparent government, and I don't think that, you know, us having to twist the arm of someone to get them to do what they're supposed to do is good government, but I'm only of one voice.
Yeah, I can't answer that question either about withholding.
It'd be very difficult.
Yeah.
If the developer comes in with a plan that meets all of our subdivision regulations, we don't have anything in there that says we can arbitrarily refuse to approve a plat or a preliminary plan. Yep.
Yes, yeah. Judging by your facial expressions, Madam Lawyer, I knew we were kind of out there on thin ice.
I think it's a major enough road, though, that you don't want to slow it down and put a traffic signal. I think you'll have 10,000 other people other than 20 men at you for that, so.
And we've, we've looked at lowering the speed limit, and all it is, is just gonna pile things back up, and we're working on it, really. We truly are. We just, we'd like to get it right the first time.
And I will tell you that I witnessed right in front of me, three days ago, two cars right in front of me go past the flashing sign, past the car on the right on the shoulder, and just keep right on and going. So signs are, signs are good if people can read and people can pay attention, but they don't.
Yes.
So you guys mentioned bringing this issue up at the next meeting. Can I, can I ask, what are, what are we, you know, I'm kind of keeping everybody in that it's not here up to date as to what's going on. So the next meeting, can, I mean, do we know what's gonna be talked about? Is there a possibility that a proposal is going to be made there? And if so, can we, can we make sure that we have a view of that prior to the meeting?
I don't think there'll be a proposal, certainly for the next meeting, but we'll go back.
I think we're gonna go back and look at that. If, is it feasible to put this traffic, like there? Is it feasible to have turning lanes in there? We're gonna go back to the traffic study and get all the numbers that we need, and then we're discussing. You bet.
Because that's what I need. I'd like to at least see the study or talk to a traffic engineer, because I'm not convinced extending Heritage will help solve the problem. It certainly won't resolve it all, you know, you're still gonna, in my opinion, need the turning lane and the signal to resolve it completely. But if that's not feasible, then we gotta go with what's best available, so.
Okay. But yes, it is on the, will be on the agenda for the meeting coming up here, the 16th.
Joe, thanks, folks, for bringing that forward again. Appreciate that.
All right. We have a resignation, and due to that resignation, we also have somebody that wants to come back and work for us.
Yep, Brett Crum has submitted his resignation. Effective October 12th.
Make a motion to approve his resignation.
I have a motion from Hausmann, second from Brooks, to approve the resignation of Brett Crum from the city. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wish him best of luck from the council on this new endeavor. And with that said, we also have somebody that, Mr. Bixby wants to come back, huh?
Yes. Brett, we hired Brent as our electrician. Larry did have that position before he went to the school. Larry would like to come back and work for us, so we're recommending that we hire Larry at the same step that he was at when he left a year, year and a half ago, step 2810 of the salary scale.
Make a motion to approve?
A motion from Hausmann, second by Jones, to approve the hiring of Larry Bixby at step 28-10. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was a lot in the streets. Is there anything else that we can cover in the streets?
Raleigh, are we good?
I see that going on, too, so.
Good?
Good.
Good, good. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 13, water and sewer. We have Sukup Construction Pay App number five, bio solid and cell removal regrading.
This is a progress payment for grading and bio solids, work being completed on the bio solids project. That project is going quite well until it started raining this weekend. They actually started moving a lot of dirt, and actually, the bio solids have been removed now. So this is a partial pay request, and we'd recommend authorization and payment.
All bio solids are going tonight?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, second.
A motion from McInerney, second by Hausmann, for approval of pay app number five on the bio solid and cell regrading project. Questions or discussion?
This'll be interesting after tonight's rain, I have to agree, as much as their forecast, and if they have to, I don't know any facts, or...
If Sioux Falls shuts us off, you mean?
Yeah. With that being said, I have a motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, water and sewer, going on? Yes, sir.
I would like to add, we're working with Brian to get a PowerPoint presentation put together for the October 10th meeting, just so you guys are aware of that. And we've been working on, basically, the presentation's gonna really just touch on the time schedule over the last 20 years or so of what's transpired on the water side, and then also what's proposed going forward. So we're looking at a timeline for, you know, from the past, plus going forward, and then also just kind of a summary of where we're at with all of our just different infrastructure on the water and sewer, or the water only, at this point.
I'm, I'm hearing, I'm not on there, but I'm hearing there's a lot of comments and questions on Facebook. I don't know if anybody could summarize those and just at least make, make sure they're all addressed in that presentation in some form or form. I don't want people leaving and saying, "You didn't even answer X, Y, and Z." It has to be a fully productive meeting where, you know, comprehensive's a better word, where people are leaving satisfied with that their question's got answered at least.
We're gonna also put together additional, we've been trying to capture those comments as well and making sure that we have an answer to each of them. So we'll actually have something in writing also, like we did at the last meeting, where we had the question and the answer, so that there's that handout. Plus, we, some of that stuff has been answered already, but we'll try to make sure we duplicate it again and get that information out there.
Is that at 6 o'clock? At 6? Thanks, John, for doing that.
Thank you. Anything else, water or sewer?
We're closing on the West Water Tower site on Friday.
Oh, awesome.
Information. And then Christine has scheduled a leaf drop-off day.
Yeah, there's three leaf drop-off days. First one will be October 28th, November 4th, and November 18th. So I'll get that in the paper, get that off to the appropriate places that need that soon here, so, but those are up and coming.
Those are popular days. Our citizens enjoy being able to put their leaves there. Any other business before council? With that being said, I will entertain a motion. And a motion from Jones, second from Hausmann for adjournment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.